CSSU Board of School Directors Regular Meeting, April 9th, 2014. Plunging meeting to order at 5:10. So we have a couple of adjustments to the agenda. Under, we're going to pull a few things off the consent agenda. The two job share proposals are going to be under Action Matters, so 7.5 for Heinsberg, 7.6 for Charlotte. I'd also like to take the meeting minutes off. They'll be 7:07. Is there any other adjustments to the agenda? Okay, we have quite a bit to get through in a half an hour, so we'll jump right in. Audience Communications? Are there our speakers?
These are our speakers.
Okay. So you guys get to talk later. So we're at 4.1, Presentation on Tiered Instructional Leadership Team.
Sure. And I will, this is not going to be a very formal presentation. Most of what I'm going to say is in your write-up because I think what you're looking for is just kind of an update as to where we are in our MTSS work, our multi-tiered system of support work. And TILTS, which is our Tiered Instruction Leadership Team, is really kind of the think tank that encompasses most of the work we're doing right now. So I'll just highlight a couple of things and then I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have. One thing that I would highlight is just in general, this is more about our overall approach to multi-tiered systems of supports. We continue to see MTSS not as an initiative in and of itself, but rather either, whether you want to think of it as the umbrella or the foundation, through which we do all of our work around the Common Core because MTSS is really about having the systems in place so that all of our students can access the rich learning that we're creating for kids. And so the two pieces happening right now this year, the two main pieces, there are a lot of moving parts underneath this, but the two focuses of the SU, one is the Tiered Instruction Leadership Team. So there's a description, and I think you guys are familiar from last year's presentation, of who the TILTS is. TILTS is made up of some principals, special ed directors, special educators, literacy coordinators, Molly and I. It's facilitated by a team of folks from Vermont Reeds Institute. And that group is really our think tank. So how are we studying and using inquiry to understand how our practices align with evidence-based practices? Last year, we had a strong focus on assessment. What do we need to know about kids in order to be able to target intervention? And this year, it's taking that conversation and moving it into what is good quality intervention? How do we know our intervention is going to accelerate growth? So we're looking at some key components of understanding. What is acceleration? What does prevention mean? And really kind of developing guiding principles for intervention. The second portion that we're doing this year is, so TILTS is really focused on the learning, but the underlying question is how do we take the learning of that group, which is extensive, and bring it to the broader system? So parallel work is that MTSS is one of three professional learning topics for our lead, our principal leadership team across the SU. And we have one of our consultants from VRI helping us lead the lead through conversations to bring that learning to their level. And what the principals are focused on is the systems and structures part. So how do we operationalize the learning that we're doing? How do we bring it to a broader audience? So in March, last month, this month, and next month, at our day-long lead sessions, we're really digging into that. So what are the structures that we have in place? How do we make sure that what we're doing in our schools related to intervention is in alignment with these best practices? And the other thing that I would highlight is that just kind of looking ahead, Molly and I just last week met with our consultants to kind of start to frame our thinking around next year's work. And TILTS will continue to be sort of the leadership entity that's responsible for really digging in and learning. We have some more components of intervention that we want to focus on. We're also starting to think about a more long-range professional development plan for the broader intervention community in our schools to make sure that, again, we're bringing that learning down to the level of everyone providing intervention. And another thing that we're going to start to shape next year is a process through which schools can look at the interventions they do have in place and kind of self-assess to see, now that we've shifted our understanding of what is good intervention, how do we make sure the practices going on in our building are in alignment with that? And so we'll, you know, continue to kind of shape that. We're really just at the brainstorming session of that part of the work for now. Those are the things that I would highlight. I could talk for a long, long time about MTSS, but I don't think that's what you need or want right now. So, questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah?
So we're on to Reports to the Board. Colt Report, Elaine?
I just wanted to read a letter that was hanging on my door on Monday when I got back to work. It's David's Saturday, so I'm guessing it was on the door into the main office before it got to my door. It says, "Dear Schools District, I attended your schools included here on the third floor of this building, 1967 to 72. I am grateful for the experiences I had and the education I received. My father, John Soder, was doing his residency in cardiovascular surgery at UVM. I'm now a consultant for the largest group of Christian private schools in the US and the world. Thank you." Dr. Martin Lofter. I think it's kind of fun, isn't it? To now and then find out that somebody who was in your school all these years back still bothers to take the time to write a letter as he or she is going through. So obviously, it's for all of you, some of you who have been around for...
I don't think I can take credit for 1967.
Well, it was clearly the Shelburne School District.
It was the Shelburne School District.
And I thought it was on the board.
I don't know that. So Megan, Megan's report really is very lengthy and really does explain Tiered Instruction Leadership Team. Even tonight, there are agenda items on a couple of boards that are a direct result of this work. And so I think that C.D. and Molly Shelburne, you'll be looking at some reassignment of positions, and they really are related to this conceptual leadership focus. So if you haven't read it, I certainly encourage you to read it. Molly, you want to say something about the mentor program?
Sure. In your packet is an announcement about an annual event that we have, which is the culmination of our mentoring for new teachers program. And that happens on May 15th, and you're all invited. It's an opportunity to see what goes on for our new teachers and what they work on. They will come in their dyad, their mentor, mentee, they will both be at a table. And after some introductions and hellos, they talk, the mentee, the new teacher, talks a little bit about their first-year experience and a project that they took on with their mentor and how their mentor influenced their work and supported them. And the mentor usually has some things to say. It's a very uplifting, kind of celebratory time to watch our new teachers grow and talk about their reflection of the year. So you're all welcome. We'd love to have you. If you do come, I'll put you at a table. There are, you know, eight tables or so full of folks sharing, and I'll just point you in the direction of a table.
Will there be an RSVP? I mean, you'll want to know.
It's on here.
Okay.
Negotiations? We are in fact-finding, and I'm sure you all know that. Putting briefs together. That would be Scott Cameron and Cindy, I guess. So I'm thinking we've had a little conversation, so we probably don't have need for an executive session on that since it's not any new news. Kind of looking around the table to see that everybody's...
Have they found one yet?
Yes. I think. So Cindy, and we think it is, or do we not want to say yet?
It's not the name that's jumping into my head at the moment. I'll have to look it up and let you know.
We'll maybe send a note out to everybody.
As long as we think we're close, that'd be great.
No, I think we, I know we reached agreement on one. But I think it may be the person that did it last time, but I'm not positive.
Do we have a time frame? Is there a tentative date set up?
They were still trading back and forth whether, how they wanted to do that. There's a date by, both by contract and by our schedule that they're trying to adhere to. So we hopefully have a report back in May.
So when would that, so it might happen in April?
It could. I just haven't heard for sure.
Can you remind us of the process once the report comes back?
Sure. Once the hearing or presentation of briefs occurs, they'll be, the fact finder will have 30 days to get a report back to us. For 10 days after the report is released, it will still be a private document. We may or may not come back to the negotiation table during that 10-day period, and then the document would be public, and we would show that upon request. Not, the board members will get a copy regardless of the 10 days.
So you'll notice that in the Colt Report, there's also a legislative update, which these days, as soon as you write it, something big happens. Tonight is something big that's happening is that there is a hearing hosted by House Education and Ways and Means, and a current and former school board member from Chittenden South is testifying. Either Bob or I could testify this time because we're at our board meeting, so. And I'm sure we'll read about that in the paper tomorrow. So that is a big thing that's going on. The whole governance conversation, obviously, is a big conversation. And H, that's H-883. I think there ought to be a law about like how schools not starting with eight because it's very difficult to spin it all.
Let me do it.
H-889 is the school finance one, and that also is a big, big topic right now. So those are the two we, we'll keep you updated on if they change dates. Bob, you had an announcement that you wanted to make.
In your, in the report, I mentioned that Joyce Bulb is leaving after 15 years. Those of you who worked with her, it would be great if you, somewhere between now and the end of the year, stopped in, said hi, hugged her, and wished her the best. She's not one to have a large celebration, so don't bring 30 of your friends along and a band and so forth, but just do make a point to thank her for everything she's done for all of you for all these years.
Joyce has done a wonderful entire, for sure. Okay, that's it. Any questions? You go first with it.
Actually, Megan, could you talk to the physical therapy position because that's going to be in our Action Matter later?
Sure. So apologize if I am repeating what I wrote in there, but historically, each of your individual districts has contracted with an outside staff person to provide physical therapy services for special ed. And they're all, even though a couple of them happen to contract with the same provider, that's their own decision. It's never been a unified approach. Through the process of consolidation, we've uncovered, had uncovered some pretty significant discrepancies between service delivery model and cost based on, based on who your provider was. And not only from a cost perspective, but from a, is the service provision in alignment with where we're going and what we believe about intervention? So for that reason, and also because consolidation gives us the opportunity to be able to pool our resources instead of doing it individually, we now have the justification, or we have enough numbers when we pull all of our students together to justify on-staff physical therapy positions, the same way we have occupational therapy positions. And this gives us the opportunity to be more consistent, more equitable, foster more collaboration between our OTs and our PTs. So there's a lot of benefits for us being able to bring staff on board. And this is not a difference in the number of hours. It's the same number of hours, we're just going to be using on-staff employees instead of contracted employees for that work.
Megan, have the local administrators talked to you about, I'm just wondering, because, you know, if you need PT during this PE class?
Yes.
So it's all been worked out as...
Yeah, it's a great question. One of the things that we've done to address that issue, because that was one of the first things that folks talked about, is we will be bringing on multiple physical therapists to cover what is really just a little over a 1.0 FTE, but we're going to have multiple people so that they can be in, you know, several PE classes when they're all offered at the same time.
So we'll get to the Action Matter. We will have had the discussion. No questions on that? Okay. Any other questions on the Colt Report? 5.2 for Food Services Committee. There was a report in the packet.
I have additional comments. First of all, I am not on the committee. I supported the committee. But Paul was going to speak tonight, can't be here, so he asked me to read the following, for which I need my glasses. Paul's note to all of you, "As we've confirmed, the food service delivery has evolved significantly since we were kids. Expectations from a variety of stakeholders, including parents, students, government, et cetera, are different and growing, as is the potential to meet these expectations. However, the current system across CSSU is not broken, nor was it ever suggested that it was. But like other programs across the SU, one has to question whether this is how we'd be doing it if we started over from scratch. We're fortunate to have other models to look at nearby. The model we as a group learned most about is in Addison Northeast. It seemed innovative, but would require resources to replicate in CSSU. There was, theirs was developed in response to dissatisfaction and increased expectations, and no one has indicated that CSSU has the same issues. I think it's fair to say that the committee's work is done and that future work will depend on the readiness and willingness of local boards to carve out the time necessary to do the work. Respectively submitted, Mr. Paul Lamberson." I'm going to report this in your packet.
So I guess a question on this would be, what would we like to do with this topic? I mean, except the report, but is there more work to be done on this, or?
Yeah, just a reminder of how we got to this point. We had had discussions about food service, and last year, we had charged a committee to do some work. And I think as board members, we were thinking there was going to be a report out at the retreat, and I have to admit that I kind of let this fall through the cracks, and then it just, you know, in the fall, we realized that, okay, the food service committee, it's still ongoing, and we never quite wrapped up our work as a board on it. So part of the report that Bob helped facilitate getting out is to bring some closure to that committee appointment, because we had appointed people to serve on the committee, and Paul, who, his term on the board was over, and we've had community members sit on boards, but, you know, we needed to have some reconfiguration if this was going to be a long-term committee. You know, our representation on committees, we have it in policy. It's typically representation from each of the member school districts and so forth. And we had a charge, and it just kind of took on a life, it didn't take on a life of its own. You know, Bob was all over and had it together, and they did their work and did a lot of study, but the report is part of that closure. And so when you ask Jean, you know, do we do something next with it? It's to bring closure to that committee work, and then if there's another committee to be charged, that should be a formal charge of the board with an expectation for timeline and so forth.
Well, we certainly can put it on the retreat agenda to discuss if there's a next step that we'd like to take. What I think I'm reading and what I'm hearing is that the committee that we did just ask to do all this work and did a lot of work is finding no compelling reasons right now to consolidate food service and to leave it as is. I think that's what I'm hearing. I guess there's no one on the...
I guess a comment that I would make, it's a little bit surprising to me and perhaps disappointing that there isn't a recommendation. It's my understanding that many of the K-8 districts, you know, on a fairly regular basis run deficits in their, you know, in the cafeteria budget, and that CVU has the opposite problem.
Well, Heinsberg wants to be adopted by CVU.
So, you know, like I say, it's just surprising that, you know, if we've got some fiscal issues with it, and maybe they weren't really looking at focusing on the fiscal pieces. Maybe they were just looking at, you know, how's the food? And if everybody thinks the food's okay, then that seemed fine to them. I don't know.
I'm sure they were looking at the fiscal piece.
I feel like they were eating a lot in fact. If you look at this agenda.
Remember, Paul was the chair.
So, like I say, just, you know, a little surprising.
Well, if everyone's okay, we'll put it on the retreat agenda as a topic. Give it a little bit of thought if you, I have not talked to Molly on the CVU board. I don't know, you know, what her take is, and so we could just follow up and have the discussion if there's something that we feel we'd like to charge another committee to take a slightly different tack, then we can do that.
By then, we might also know a little bit more about governance.
Or not.
Is it something that would end up getting consolidated if that legislation makes its way through?
Everything would be.
We'd have to get to it eventually, I guess.
And, you know, the history of us working together as individual boards and then the CSSU board helping facilitate activities, is we've consolidated so much already. And food service is one of those pieces that's just all, it's all over the place. I mean, there are a lot of really great things that are happening, and Bob's pulled our managers together from all the food service programs, and there's been a lot of good collaborative work, but as far as consolidating the way that we have other programs, that's one area we have not taken that leap.
It reminds me of our red discussion, which is, there's a lot of pros and cons, but in the end, there was no real compelling reason to do that step, so. All right, I'll put it on the agenda for the retreat. We're on to Discussion Matters, 6.1, Calendars.
So calendars are on the agenda this month for discussion and for action next month. This is the calendar we're proposing. You might remember that last month, you adopted the regional calendar. That probably in the future will just be on the consent agenda because we really don't have any say in the regional calendar. By statute, that's adopted by the regional superintendent. But this calendar is the one that includes now the additional professional development days, the parent-teacher conference days. And there are two calendars in the board packet, K-8 and K-12. Each of the local boards will also be having this discussion. The calendars were developed by the entire administrative team. So this is the recommendation that's coming to you from the lead group, the principals and the central office leadership team. Obviously, it makes sense to coordinate these calendars. And more than ever, the K-12 calendar is coordinated. It can't be 100% coordinated because there's a little bit more flexibility with K-8 because you don't send anyone to the tech centers. Any questions or comments?
So the Friday, the June 13th, last day of school, that would be assuming no snow days. Is that correct?
Right.
Now, with the number of K-8 days, are they down to 175 days?
176.
So you, so should you have one snow day, the boards would have the flexibility of waiving it. But if you had two, you'd have to go to the next one. So this is really on the agenda just to prep people for their discussion, their local board discussions. So any other questions on...
We're in this, at the start of the year before snow days.
176.
Same thing this year?
This model's...
Okay. Everyone okay with calendars? Ready to go back? All right. 6.2, this discussion is on the allocation methodologies for special education, which we, so we are discussing it tonight, and we'll be voting on it next month, right?
And this is for the next by... 6.1, that will start this through mid-July 1.
So the, there was, the write-up was actually in last month's Colt Report, but the allocation methodologies under consideration are by ADM, by equalized pupil count, or by served child count. And do people have a chance to take a look at it, or have any comments? There were pros and cons. I think that, there was a con on here that says, none of these take into account severity of disability or service array. So that, since they all had that on there, we can kind of take that aside, which means the only real strong con versus a pro was that the special ed child count would be very changeable. I don't know, I think most of us would like to have budgets that are more stable. That's kind of one really nice point of having this whole thing contained and having that swing huge amounts could be havoc or give you a big bonus in a different year. So...
Neither would you really sufficiently explain to the electorate.
Because you can't go into a lot of details of special ed. So that kind of leaves ADM or equalized pupil count, so equalized pupil count, is that what, would we actually be using one we use now with the rest of our finances, which is looking back two years?
Yeah, this is the number that we get from the state.
Yeah. My only question on here, Bob, is do we get ADM or equalized pupil count sooner than the other one? Are they both?
They all come just about the same time. I think in order in December is ADM has to be done first, and then equalized pupil count, and child count is reported about mid-December. So they're all in the same vicinity.
When you say, I'm sorry, equalized pupil count, you told me you have the weighted count.
Does the wait, does the waiting take into account special needs kids? I've always thought of poverty and high school versus, yeah, okay. So it's really irrelevant to this particular topic. So does anyone have a...
My question is, how do we make the decision? What's the recommendation from the administrative team about what seems perhaps most fair for everybody and for, we meet our needs, our student needs?
Right. I mean, I think Elaine highlighted the, that there is not, operationally, in terms of how we deliver our services, isn't going to vary a whole lot based on allocation method. I'd agree with Jean's description of the, you know, if we were to take a stand in terms of a recommendation, child count is much more variable to, than the other two from a stability perspective. And there's also, and I'm not sure that this is a real concern, but there is, there has been voiced in other areas, concern that tying anything to the number of kids you identify for special education can be problematic because people can either be motivated one way or the other. Although, we have very specific regulated procedures to find kids eligible for special education, so I personally don't think that's as much of a risk. But, you know, I think outside of CSSU, the schools that are consolidating are more in the ADM realm than equalized pupil, if it makes a difference in terms of what others are doing. But there is not, how we deliver services isn't going to differ based on this piece.
Do we have any sense of, if we choose one method or another, whether any of the school districts are going to see a big jump that first year we move to it? You know, a concern that I would have is that, I hope it's not my school district, but that, you know, somebody sees several hundred thousand dollars and, you know, maybe a 10, 15, 20 percent increase in that first year, because I don't recall if there's any way you can say, well, we'll transition to this over a period of time. I think it's going to be, you know, just diving right in, and it could be ugly come budget time for some school districts to be trying to explain why they're having this massive increase and the ripple effect it would have all the way through their budget.
Well, I think we would describe that, that could happen to us if we have one kid with profound needs moves into your district, you can have a huge jump. But I think, you know, I think Elaine was going to talk to Megan about, I think we need to get something out in the newspapers explaining special ed. We get so many questions about it at our basic things, I don't know if everybody else does, but if we set up, this is what we're required to do by federal law, by state law, this is why the state has said that we have to consolidate, and this is why we've come up with this funding formula. We talked about... Maybe it'll hurt last one.
We talked about that as a con topic early next year.
Exactly.
The numbers were, we do have the numbers. They were in last month's. So we'll make sure that they get in the agenda for...
Oh, I was...
And I was just looking at it, it seems like some, some schools get hurt or affected more on some schemes than others. My eyeballing, it says ADM's a little more tempered than the other, but that's, we shouldn't really be making the decision based on that, but I understand.
And one of the things, I think it's important to note, though, one of the things we did learn, because when we were back in the mode of thinking we didn't have to do this, last year when we ran the numbers, the discrepancy was much, much greater, hundreds of thousands of dollars greater. And so what that tells you is there's a lot of variability there anyways. It's based on the service plan, year to year, depending on who the students are and what their needs are. Based on IEP meetings and the provision of services, you can have a big fluctuation. Based on IEP meetings and the provision of services, you can have a big fluctuation. So we could have a year where, wow, wonder of wonders, it's pretty evened out. We don't, we don't know that until we do the service planning.
And also, I mean, to that, also to that point, the numbers looked significantly different, mocking them up with a different year. There was also a lot of, a certain amount of work done between that year and this year around model and how we use, how we deliver services. So there's, you know, for folks kind of looking, again, consolidation isn't purely a money-saving endeavor, but there are ways that we bring those things.
And we will continue that work.
Exactly.
That work's not going to stop.
Correct.
Wouldn't that offer us more consistency, just as you spoke about physical therapy? At least you'd have consistency and I would say fairness, maybe that's a value judgment. But in that way, it would, it would help. And you're saying ADM is more level than equalized student?
It just happened to be in this, I'm just eyeballing it, I don't.
Because I was thinking equalized student, at least your high school gets weighted more because of the delivery, but that's not, not true in this case.
The high school takes a huge hit.
Yeah, understanding the data's going to move and it's going to look different. You're going to draw different conclusions, no matter what year you do it. The one uniform thing is whenever you do it, there will be winners and losers. It never, it never comes out the same when you switch methods of allocating. The law's inclined towards ADM, that's the way it's written. If you're unable to make a decision, it would be by ADM. And you use primarily ADM when you allocate costs by any sort of student count. But we haven't yet ventured in an administrative recommendation in the area, all that aside.
So you'll see that on next month's package?
Jean?
Yes.
Just, I want to get back to Lorna's point and comment about process. It would be helpful if we knew what our process would be to come to this decision because it will be a big decision that lives with us for a while. And is it, you know, the CSSU board that's going to make the decision? Is there feedback that CSSU board members get from their local board? Or we just do it at the CSSU board? And then how do we, what's the criteria that we use? And of course, administrative recommendation would be, administrative recommendation would be important.
So we've been in this process for about four months now.
Yeah.
So this has been on the agenda for at least three months. And the idea was that tonight was the night to have the conversation. It is the SU board. There's nothing that says you can't discuss it locally, but it will have no impact. It's this board that takes that vote. And if this board can't take that vote, as Bob just said, it defaults to ADM. So if you wanted cover and you thought you needed cover, you could just say, oops, can't make a decision, and we would go to ADM. But there's no, this is the process that we've got in place. So this is the opportunity to ask the questions, to.
Yeah, I just would want our board to be ready for it. I know, you know, when we had the board chairs meeting, when I participated in those, we really chewed on some of the details at length. And we haven't had that same level here. And I don't know if we need to because we were just kind of.
Well, I actually, the way it was set up was that the board chairs would get it the month before or the month of, but earlier than this board, and have exactly the same conversation if they wanted to. Obviously, when you've got six people in the room, there's a little different level of engagement because more people can talk for longer and there's not, you know, such a long agenda. But it's exactly the same process. And the intention is, this is the night to engage in all of that conversation and ask the questions and.
And I would hope that our, that this board would not make a decision based on what's best for the school we represent. But, and I think this is just a mathematical kind of question and which of the two makes the most sense? And I don't, I think a decision will live forever, but I think it's.
But it does, it sounds as though, am I correct Elaine, with what you said before, was that it can change from year to year as to what mathematically makes more sense?
Yeah, on any, and what I, just to clarify, on any given year that we start that, it's going to have a different impact. But once we start, then it's.
Evens out. Right, but the ADM count will change.
Because ADM, if you have declining enrollments, you're going to have less of an assessment.
I have a question. Could you reiterate for me why child count for children served is not a good idea? Because in the past, with their own budgets, we have some high needs, students, we meet their needs and we pay for it.
Right, so we still would pay, we meet their needs and pay for it, but we would pay for it in a insurance pool, if you will. So if we did by child count, and I can think of at least three of the schools in the years that I've been here who have been through a time when they've had huge special ed increases that they couldn't really explain to the public because our schools, as big as they are for Vermont, are still, we're still in small communities and we cannot talk about those things. And so that wouldn't protect you against those spikes. If we charged back by child count, if you had a kid in Charlotte or Heinsburg, high needs, your budget would spike, maybe by, you know, I don't know what the percentage is, but all the discretionary money that you have by going into an ADM, then it really protects you against that. You're never going to have those big spikes because it's absorbed by the entire SU pool. And then redistributed.
Affordable care.
Well, you know, I don't, you know, it definitely even.
But it's a little bit like that.
It does even out. And we all, it happens to everyone, it's just different if it happens at CVU or Williston or if it happens at Heinsburg or Charlotte.
If H883 ever becomes law or something close to it, it doesn't matter anyway.
And it's a moot point.
So why don't, if you don't mind Elaine, why don't I ask for an administrative recommendation next month?
Yeah, we'll be happy.
And we'll go with that. I mean, we'll go with that, but we may not go with that, but we'll listen to you.
We'll deal with the recommendations.
I'll deal with the recommendation.
And, you know, as part of that, a reminder of how many decisions are, or how many assessments we have by ADM versus.
Yes.
Which is most.
6.3, personnel action, special ed. This is only on here because it's a change in our process, which we're going to be affected by tonight, which is now that the special ed folks, our employees are CSSU employees, starting really tonight, this board makes a lot of personnel decisions about those folks. Megan, did you want to chime in on this or it's just a process change, so?
Yeah, I mean, I think you articulated it well. As of July 1st, all special educators who are currently employees of your individual local boards are now your employees as a CSSU board. So from contract signing to resignations to job shares to leave requests will be heard here. And in the process of figuring out what that looks like for next year, so for the coming year, when we come up to this, because especially things like job shares are very much impacted locally. So those discussions starting next year will happen in March so that the local board can at least discuss what's the, what's the request, what's the impact, what's the administration's recommendation and can have that discussion. They can't take action because it's not their employee. But then in April, the, it will come to this board as an action item. And then we will be able to speak to not only the administration's recommendation, but administration along with the local board discussion. So that you'll have more information to be able to make that decision and you'll feel like it's been discussed. We're at the point right now where we didn't have the opportunity to put that process in place for tonight. And we're here in April, we didn't have a chance to discuss it in March.
So we're going to see kind of a split decision-making process going forward. One reason we took the job share items, well, let me start with the easy ones. We did leave leave of absence requests on the consent agenda, that's where they are, this board will vote on them. We pulled the job share ones off because they are pretty important local decisions. And in the future, as Megan said, we would have, the local boards would have discussed it, had an administrative recommendation, had a recommendation perhaps to this board. We'll have to work out how that kind of works and then we would vote on that. With, you know, they are, they are CSSU employees. If there's something we didn't like about it, we could choose not to accept the recommendation, just like anything else. But given that we haven't had the opportunity for the local board to have that discussion yet, and I don't know about the rest of you, but I feel a little funny making the decision for Heinsburg. What we're going to do when we get to these, the motion for the job share in Heinsburg and the job share in Charlotte, I'm not exactly sure how we're going to do the motions yet. But what I recommend we do tonight is that this board, we can't wait another month, right? These folks are waiting to see if they're getting their contracts. So this, I think for tonight, what I'd recommend is that this board defer to the local boards. I mean, we have to vote to accept the recommendation of the local boards, which the local boards can do in an hour. It's a little uncomfortable, it's not really very clean, but I think for, you know, just this one time, it kind of makes the most sense unless people have a real aversion to that.
And might I say something?
Yes, please.
Because here's an opportunity to say the same thing to both of the local boards that are going to be facing this tonight. In general, we support short-term job shares that are based on flexibility for good employees that we want to keep who have personal health or family reasons for asking for a job share. We hope that they're time-limited. Because we, we always believe, and this is the time of the year that I say to principals and to teachers alike, it's a huge responsibility of assignment that a principal has to determine, like, here's all the people that I have on my staff, what's the best place to put each person so that it benefits the students best and benefits the system best. And you can see that if you have a job share that goes for years and years and years and there's no end in sight, there can be times where that ties administration's hands. Now, we don't have the opportunity necessarily to make the very best decisions we want because we're tied with, okay, well, we have to slot this in. So in my own mind, I see a distinction between a job share that goes on and on and on for years and a permanent part-time position. So a permanent .5 FTE, let's say. So when we, when we got into the sticky piece about, oh my gosh, these are SU employees, the SU board needs to make this decision, and thinking back about, well, what should this process look like so that the people who ought to be at the table having the conversation are actually having the conversation? We already had had the March board meeting, so we're already a little bit behind. And then we started looking around for, well, what does our policy say about this? And the policy itself is pretty darn simple. It says we can approve job shares. But back in 2000, the board adopted, and it's in your board packet, job sharing instructional positions that really gives a very different focus on this. So I would be recommending that tonight, as you always have at the local level, you discuss, talk to Megan. No, Molly will be in Shelburne, I'll be in Charlotte. Ask if you have any questions, we are happy to respond to them. But going forward, I think that since these are SU positions now, it's really important that we tidy this up and have really clear guidelines so that somebody going into a job share knows I don't just get to go and beg the board to continue the job share for another year, that there is, there's some time finite conclusion to the job share. So questions about that? We'll be in a better place next year, it is a little sticky this year.
You said that administrations generally favor short-term job shares in certain situations. How would you define short-term?
Well, we haven't had the conversation with the entire administration. So if you asked me, I would say, depending on what that reason was for the job share to begin with that it was given, I certainly don't think beyond five years, myself. And I, and it depends on the position also. And I'll remind the board that in negotiations, we took a strong stand about like, no job shares for classroom positions. Not forced on job shares. And that's accepting the reality that if I'm going to work with Jean, day in, day out, have to, you know, chat with her on the weekend because something happened to one of our kids over the weekend, whatever, Jean and I better be on the same page, we'd better have the same work ethic, we'd better have, you know, there's so many things that need to work. So I just think that it's, there's a lot to think about and definitely we're committed to doing that work going forward. It's not done in time for this meeting.
So I think that probably goes for all the special ed positions is that we need to think through all the different things that we could get to and try to have, not that the local boards couldn't recommend something different, but sort of what we think would be the best practices, right, for that. So Cindy, can I ask you, I'm going to whip through the first, a couple of them before we get to those job shares. I need a motion that's going to essentially say we're deferring to the vocal board.
If I was making it up.
Yes.
I would suggest something like, I move to grant the Charlotte board permission to make the decision on behalf of the SU board on this job share proposal, such and such.
So grant the Charlotte board authority to make the decision.
Yeah, see, between the two of us, we'll get there. And Sandy will make it all sound great.
Okay, but we get there, you're going to have to remember what you just said. So is there any other questions on special education and why we're voting on them tonight or why we have them on our agendas? Okay. So we're going to go to Action Matters and now I am officially behind schedule, so. This has never happened when Colleen was in charge.
Never.
So 7.1, can I have a motion to accept the CSSU budget?
Second.
And is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Motion's carried.
Thank you, Valentina.
Thank you, Bob. Can I have a motion to approve the creation of a new fiscal services position at CSSU?
Come on.
Thank you, Kristin. Need a second? Second, Joe, thank you, Joe. Bob, any, or any discussion on this, anybody?
No, pursuant to the earlier conversation on Joyce Bowles, there's no better time to relook at who's doing what to whom, when, as when one of the four of us leaves, so we're doing that. We're kind of reallocating responsibilities, cover some shortcomings of the existing structure. We've got particularly, having no backup for about a third of Mike's work, and so this will do that.
So just to clarify, this is, it's a new position, but it's replacing an old position, so it's not an add.
Right, no change in FTE count.
The same little box with the same little number, authorizing a 1.0 FTE.
Right.
You are talking a different salary level.
Different salary.
A magnitude to be determined.
Yes, after we attract the right candidate and convince him or her that this is the job for the rest of their life.
Okay.
For career, at least.
Or at least as long as I'm here.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The ayes have it. Can I, 7.3, can I have a motion to create, approve the creation of a new physical therapist position at CSSU?
Come on. Second.
Thank you, Kristin, thank you, Lorna. We talked about this a little earlier, is there any other, if we think of any other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any physical therapists on the board who want to abstain? The ayes have it. 7.4, can I have a motion to award the bus bid contracts?
Come on. Second.
Kristin, you're enrolled tonight.
Thank you.
Makes it really easy for Stan. Bob, any comments on this or any questions from the board?
I, in the interest of being clear on what you're doing, you are this year for the first time approving the bus purchases for your member schools here at the SU versus us doing some convoluted process because H883 isn't yet law that has the decision made by the SU board, but then the individual purchase is approved by Shelburne, CVU, and Williston. Since you're purchasing and paying for them in the end at the SU, we thought it was right that you approved the purchases. And so we believe it's the right thing to do. The actual purchase order will still be made on the shoulders of the bookkeeper in those three individual schools.
I thought it was just because I'm board chair and I love these bus stuff.
Well, I tried to cook up a way to make sure it was here, Jean, and not elsewhere. But there was some legal basis with which to do that.
So, so I, actually, I do need, I do verification. The local boards are actually going to sign the purchase order. Not the board, but the.
The local boards aren't going to do anything. When you finish your work, I will initiate instructions so that a purchase order is issued from the appropriate school to where the bus is going to be titled. And then Mike and I do a body of work to get the costs of that transaction transferred out of the school that did it and into the SU because SUs are not legally allowed by law to borrow money.
Okay.
You're allowed to purchase buses on behalf of the SU and trust that Mike and I make you, hold you harmless for said work.
What were the article amounts, do you recall?
The bus, the awards were slightly under the article amounts, we're in good shape there.
Okay, any questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any bus owners abstaining? Any bus owners abstaining? Okay, we're at, the ayes have it. Seven point five, job share in Heinsberg. Okay, Cindy, what was the motion again?
The administration would recommend the following motion.
Okay.
The CSSU board authorizes the, are we doing Charlotte right now?
Let's do it, oh, Heinsberg.
Heinsberg. Authorizes the Heinsberg board to act on this job share request for the 1415 school year.
Someone?
Thank you, Kristen.
Second.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? The ayes have it. Seven point six.
Same motion.
The same motion with the Charlotte penciled in. Thank you, Kristen.
Second.
You guys are a good team.
Tag team today.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Okay, seven point seven, approve the regu, the minutes of the regular meeting of 3:19. I just needed to add that when we were in, after we came out of our executive session, we had a motion to authorize the CSSU board chair to sign the contract with the superintendent for the 2014-15 school year. My notes, Colleen, said Colleen made the motion and Kristen seconded, but since you, it could have been reversed, given your track record, so unless you guys remember otherwise, let's go with that.
Sure.
Okay. And then the motion carried. And I just knew, we just need to add that before we... Have a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Someone?
Second.
Lorna. Quick on the trigger. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? Can I have a motion to approve the consent agenda, which now is, consists of eight point two, the director's orders, eight point three, point one, personnel, and eight point three, oh, eight point three, point one, belief abstinence requests, and eight point three point three, the new hire.
Someone?
Good job, Russ. Dave, you want to second that?
I'll second that.
All right, Dave. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And we are at nine point O, confirm next meeting date, so May 14th is the regular meeting, don't forget, the May 30th is the retreat, make sure it's on your calendar, and please make sure that the local, your local board members who are not here know that they're very welcome at the CSSU retreat. So it's not just, we want the CSSU board there, but very welcome to have the rest of the folks hang on. And then the June 25th, the business meeting, make sure it gets on your calendar, it's not an odd date, too. Did I miss anything?
April 15.
April 15. So with that, and only being a couple of minutes behind, actually, given that we didn't, luckily didn't have an executive session, we are on to our common topic.
And, and we still probably have all fifty-five minutes, right?
Yes, yep.
Yes. Yes, so I would like to introduce Sandy Latham and Carol Paulette, who were the women who did the technology audit for us for the last, when we put out an RFP. We got proposals from people who are known nationally in this work, reviewed proposals, we chose theirs, and that was with the help of the tech integration specialists and Molly and here, we're happy to be here tonight to share the results.
Thank you very much. So I give Carol Paulette, my colleague Sandy Latham, and before we go any further, I do want to ask the chair, because we're a little bit behind starting, would you like us, what would you like us to end?
Five minutes to, you have almost an hour.
I'm sorry?
Almost an hour, you have 50 minutes, sounds good.
Oh, okay, great, great. So we will present probably for about 40 minutes, and then that should allow enough time for a question and answer session. So before we get started, I just want to say thank you, several thank yous, and one is to having us here tonight to present, because we're always happy to talk about our work. The other thank you is to all of the CSSU employees, the administrators, teachers, staff, also the students who welcomed us into the schools for our visits in November and I think into December. It was really a lot of work for all the IT specialists to set up questions, observations, and visits, and people to interview, and pull documents together, all of that, and we were very, very welcomed. We ate in all the cafeterias, so if you'd like to know about your food from our perspective, we can have that. And so that was really a wonderful opportunity for us, so thank you very much. The other thing is, before we go further, I'd also just like to, both of us would like to say kudos to CSSU, because we have done this work for a fair amount of time now, we've gone to a number of other supervisor reunions in Vermont, and really, you guys are far ahead of anything we've seen before, and some that we saw, some things we saw here, we said, oh, that's what we'd love to see in other districts, so good work and all that. Of course, being far ahead doesn't mean that you can also fall behind, it's technology, so it moves quickly, and so if you want to stay where you are, you've got to pay attention to what's happening. So we were very happy to come in and do this evaluation for you. So what we'll do tonight is, this is our quick agenda, and as you can probably tell by now, I talk pretty fast, Sandy does not talk as fast, so if you need for me to slow down, or if you have questions, we have question time at the end, but if there's anything burning as we go through, please let us know. So a little bit of what we did, we'll be going through, Sandy will do actually quite a nice piece on the landscape of educational technology as it relates to educational reform. And I know some of this within your packet or available to you, but I also know our report was 92 pages plus appendices, so it's a lot to read and digest before a meeting. And then the rest of it, we'll give it. So when we responded to the RFP, there were some areas of specific focus that CSSU was interested in, specifically vision, is there a vision for us moving forward and consistency in the different school districts in terms of educational technology, accountability, the tech thing and how that's being enacted, and the organizational structure for your tech enhancement? And then that translated into these five themes that all had some sub-questions. So we arranged our recommendations, our findings and our recommendations around those themes, but of course, we had to add a couple, so we moved vision over, and we moved organizational structure, and we have something on evaluation also. So let me hand it off to Sandy, who'll do this landscape of ed technology surrounding it.
So can I ask, and will you answer honestly, were you able to read this part of the report around the educational landscape? All right, for some of you, anyway, so that's very good. That's a long section, I won't try to talk about all of it, because it would just take too much time. But there are some things that I want to point out specifically to help set the stage for this evaluation, and also just thinking about the future of educational technology as you, as you move forward. So in the report, we tried to present that full context, and hopefully at some point we will get to read all of that over, because it's more comprehensive. But the bottom line is that in schools today, the emphasis is that schools must provide experiences for students to develop skills, dispositions, and attitudes for the inevitable changes that are going to occur by the end of the century. And this slide, which is up first, is one that illustrates a model of what is envisioned to be 21st century skills. It's developed by a group called the Partnership for 21st Century Schools. And what's interesting about this model is that schooling still rests on core subjects and knowing very well solid content, factual knowledge, and that is the basis, that's the foundation for all schooling. But that in schools today, there are a number of other literacies that have to also be at play in a 21st century school. And those are information, media, and technology skills, there are life and career, career skills, and then also learning and innovation skills. And this model helps provide a picture of schools that is increasingly complex, and as the body of knowledge and new information grows exponentially every day, it's very important that our students in the future, today and in the future, are prepared to not only know about content knowledge, but to be able to transfer their knowledge to construct new learning, new knowledge, and innovative products. And this is, this is the goal of schools today. So just as, as there are standards around 21st century skills, there are also educational technology standards at both the national and state levels. And so I wanted just to point to these standards, so when we do an evaluation, we use these standards really as one of our bases by which we are making our judgments. And you'll notice here that the educational technology standards are written in a certain order on purpose. At the top is creativity and innovation, then there's communication and collaboration, research and information literacy, and then critical thinking skills for higher order and cognitive skills to be developed, digital citizenship, very important. At the last bullet, our technology skills and operations. This is a big change, and a big change in focus. When technology came into schools in the late 1970s, early 1980s, it was all about how do you use the thing, how do you use this computer? We were all doing word processing, and that was brand new. We were sending email, and that was, that was revolutionary. But today, it's assumed that those basic skills are in place, and that the standards around technology are to ensure that we're using these tools for these purposes. Okay, so that's an important point to make around educational technology. So Vermont is not isolation from the discussion that goes on at the national level, and therefore, Vermont is following a trend of 21st century skills and dispositions as it looks to what it considers to be transformation of education in Vermont and for Vermont schools. And you'll notice here that the main primary focus is on student-centered education, the leadership it takes to provide that kind of an environment, flexible learning environment for all students, engaged, engagement of the community, and to be able to evaluate and analyze those results. So not surprisingly, there is a Vermont technology plan that all schools in Vermont are required to sit every three years. CSSU currently has its plan in place for the years 2012 to 2015. But the format of the plan is very specific, and schools are asked to address these major goals in their plan. And you can see a trend of these things, student-centered learning, leadership in this environment, flexible learning environments, and engage community partners, partners. The, the important point on this slide is to, is to realize that these reforms are moving towards personalization, and that the ability to, to provide these new types of environments require, or would be impossible to achieve without educational technology to support them. These reforms are also, as you probably well know, now requiring that schools are putting personal learning plans into effect for all students, beginning in grade seven and all the way through graduation of high school. Those plans also indicate that students will have flexible and multiple pathways to achieve those goals. And, and standards will come into play, high standards, high qualities will come into play, but the time it takes for students to make those achievements and to reach those goals may vary greatly, and how they get there will vary greatly. So when you're thinking about educational technology, my, my hope is that you'll realize that it's more than just learning how to use computers, it's more than learning how to use the internet. As a field, educational technology is around how technology supports new learning and how it will help to individualize and personalize student achievement for all students.
Thanks. So that's our short intro on our motto, which is, it's not about, all about the device. It can kind of be somewhat about the device, but not completely, it's really about what that can do to transform education. So briefly about our, about our study, I always think of this evaluation or any program evaluation that I do, it's really an applied research project. So for research, we need to gather data, and this is how we gather our data, it's primarily a qualitative study. So we were given access or given documents that relate to this in terms of the technology plan, budgets, we were able to look at classroom websites, Moodle sites, all of that, planning, documentation that helped. We also spent a lot of time in the schools, we visited every school, some, we spent three days at CVU, the CSSU offices, and during those visits, we interviewed teachers, some support personnel, also some groups of students, administrators across the board, and you'll see a slide of the numbers there. Classroom observations and tours, some of those were arranged ahead of time, some of those were brought in, we tried to do a range of grade levels in every school and different subject areas. And also, on the quantitative side, we did, did conduct an online survey, it wasn't part of our original RFP proposal when we responded, but given the number of teachers in your school, we thought that was a way to hear from everybody, people who couldn't be included in interviews. And that went out to 401 individuals, who were your professional staff who really serve students and are, are holding licenses. So this was our interview group, I won't go through all the details, but we had every school and all the groups, we had 187 individuals, teachers and administrators that we talked to, some in small groups of two to four, others individually. All the individual interviews, and many of the group interviews were recorded, we transcribed, we listened, we had a protocol we used, so we looked for themes that came out of that. And we met with about 70 students, it's a little squiggly, because students came and went, and sometimes we had more than others, and the IT specialists and some of the administrators were excellent in finding students for us to talk to, from kindergarten all the way up really, and they were just all interesting and adorable. This is the response to our online survey, I was very, very pleased with this, out of 401, we had 74% response rate, slightly less completely filled out, 274, but still, most of the 299 we did use. I broke this up by school, so you could see that we had a good representation from every school, so it wasn't overly weighted. The blue is how many went out, how many subjects we had, and the red is how many respondents we had, so I was very pleased with that. And the survey, just to mention, is a national survey, it's constructed by the state educational directors of technology, it's been normed and has a good reliability and validity. We did customize it, we have permission to use it, and we customized it a little bit so that the language, Molly and Elaine and a few other people looked at it before it went out, so that language would resonate with CSSU faculty. The current state, I won't go through all of this, but basically, part of it is, we took a look at what are the essential conditions that are known nationally to really deploy educational technology, you're in very good state with most of those essential conditions, and some of these things we listed as your current initiatives made us go, oh, this is great, I wish other schools and districts would do this, in terms of your use of Google domain, the fact that your networks are not locked down, and that if a teacher wants to use YouTube for something, they don't have to go through a very onerous system to get that opened and so on, really helps instruction. And, you know, we were very, very pleased to see that. The types of policies you have in place in terms of the BYOD causes, you know, has its own issues, but we heard a lot about that. And then what particularly we loved to hear from faculty was the fact that they're actively researching, thinking, and discussing things like standard-based report cards and how technology can, can work with that, or electronic portfolios, and of course, back to the personalized learning plan. So you're not just resting on what we already have, but you've got innovative faculty thinking about where can we go from here. So now we move into those thematic areas that I mentioned, and we'll present each one with our findings, current state, and then recommendations. So let me start, the places, I'm cognizant of the time, where we have the most information, the most recommendations I'll tell you upfront, is the shared leader, the shared vision, and also leadership. And that's because really, those are the two most important parts, if you don't have that shared vision where we all know we're going the same place, and you don't have the leadership to make that happen, and those two overlap a bit, then, you know, all of the devices or networks or whatever are really not going to be well-used without that. So our findings from shared vision, we think you have a very highly talented team of tech integration specialists, they meet... They meet regularly, they share information, they meet with Elaine once a month, and, you know, they really have similar concerns, they work with each other, and, you know, that's wonderful. However, the technology plan as it's in place is really not broadly known throughout the SU, and I have some data to back that up. It's not deployed, it's that sharing of the vision that's not happening. And the understanding of how a technology supports learning, that it's again for those reforms and learning, is also not broadly understood. So as part of our survey, we asked teachers this question about, is there a shared vision? Is there a technology plan? And they had seven possible answers they could give us, everything from yes, there's a tech plan, it's been shared with me and others, you know, to I don't know, to no there isn't, to yes, there's a plan, but it's not written down, and other things. But these two categories, these two answers picked up seventy-five percent of all respondents, and we broke them out by school. So you can see in some schools, there's a high awareness, you know, almost approaching seventy-five to eighty percent, so yeah, there's a plan and I know it. Where others is like, I don't know if there's a plan. In some schools, fifty percent are, I'm not sure there's a plan, I don't know. And we don't mean, we disaggregated, just so you know for the survey, data by school where appropriate, and all the schools have their own data and Elaine has all the data together. Because that's how we learn and that's how we grow. And I just want to show this because it really does represent that we do not have a common vision here going forward, and that's important to have. A quote from someone who mentioned that, that, you know, they don't see this common vision and they're, you know, where's all the support to make this happen? And then another quote along the same line when we asked the question, are administrators' expectations concerning student technology, what are they? That student technology literacy? And I don't really know. We have equipment and not always sure what expectations are, but, you know, we should use some, and we do have a lot of support. And that is the thing we found, is that teachers feel well-supported, they have a lot of, a lot of help when they ask for it, they have a good network, they have material, things they can use, but still, you know, that lack with expectations and vision is a concern. And also, it's not just the tech vision. We would, in interviewing, ask teachers, so can you tell us how, can you explain how you use technology for a project you might have had or how you work with personalized learning for students or a student-centered plan? And they often talk to us about differentiated instruction. Good, glad you're using technology for that, but it's a little bit different. And so they couldn't really often articulate that same vision and how technology might help that. So some of the recommendations for shared vision is we need to build consensus around that with all of the stakeholders. And it's not just about technology, but it's about the role it plays in these emerging trends, really the personalized learning trend. Professional development with the administrative team so that they can also champion and share and explain this, develop the shared understanding with teachers in terms of expectations. But also, you've got roles in the schools and in the SU, so certainly the technology specialists, the librarians, curriculum coordinators, and also the administrators, where sometimes the roles are not quite clear, but to develop the shared understanding of what those roles are, how they play in this same arena, so that they can all be, also be on the same page. And then, no surprise, communicate all this with those same stakeholder groups so that everyone, the community members, everyone knows what the vision is going forward. And now, onto leadership. And this is where I think we have more material than anything, and then we promise we'll.
So we wanted to take just a moment to describe the leadership model that's currently in place. And so from our findings, we found that at the CSSU level, there's an information technology team that is comprised of the superintendent, director of curriculum and assessment, the director of network services, and then the five information technology specialists from each of the local school districts. That team meets once, once a month to discuss, you know, issues that come up around educational technology. They are the creators and crafters of the technology plan, for example, and so they bring to the table the issues that they're seeing in their daily work. In addition, at CSSU, there is kind of a division for network services. This is centralized under one person who is the director of network services, and yet there are technical support personnel in all the, all the schools based locally. This group is responsible for purchasing of equipment, providing all the technical support, and coordinating all those services for all the schools. What's nice about that model is that while it is centralized, people have a local home base for which they serve and know, know the best, they know their clientele the best. And yet, when times come up where there's a need, people can shift to other schools to help out. And so that, that system is working quite, quite well. And then at each local school, there is a school technology team, and that team is usually comprised of the director of network services, the principals at the school, the IT specialists based at each school, and the technical support personnel. That group meets frequently to discuss mostly equipment-type needs, you know, what, what do we need, what's working, where's the problem? It's less focused on the educational program, but more, more nuts and bolts about how to keep everything working and running smoothly. As Carol's already said, you, you're so fortunate to have the people that you have who serve as information technology specialists in your schools. I can personally tell you from twenty years of working in this field, these people are state leaders in Vermont, they're well-known, they're recognized, and they're excellent. So you are so fortunate to have the people that you have in place in your schools. They, on their own, strive to collaborate with each other even though they're, they're based at each different school. They, they meet weekly via video conferencing to talk about issues that they're all facing. And they work hard to try to consolidate their services as best they can. We do feel that their roles and sometimes, and their services are not always well-understood or appreciated by the larger community. And, and we also think that's probably true of library media specialists as well. In speaking with the information technology specialists, we learned or heard their frustration at times that not all teachers are held accountable to integrating technology. These are colleagues in their schools, they're licensed teachers, they're respected colleagues, but they have no authority to mandate that anyone meet with them. So the, the way the system works, they work with those people that are really interested and willing to work with them. And where they feel sometimes where they lack support is when they know that someone is not providing their students with the skills and dispositions that they could use, that there's really not a backup that will get that cooperation and collaboration going. And that's where, that's a source of frustration for them. We heard many good, good and positive remarks about administrators from teachers. Teachers within the district feel very well-supported by the administrators and are...
Can I interrupt for a second? Because we would ask the question, how well-supported do you feel? And we'd say on a scale of one to five. And almost every time it'd be five, well, maybe four because of something, well, maybe five. It was really interesting. It was not much of a, of a struggle below four ever.
Yeah, but, and what, what else we learned from the administrators is that they very purposely support technology and they try very hard to actively model their use of technology in their faculty meetings and in any opportunity that they can with their faculty. However, some teachers in our conversations with them, they did report that they felt like there wasn't enough process for them to have input. I think at times when that tech team meets to talk about equipment purchases and things like that, they probably put out an announcement saying, you know, anybody need anything or want anything, but not detailed conversations about what tools to select, what purchases to, to get for the school. And that's only in some cases.
I was going to ask, is that a broad thing or is there certain teachers who are really into this who would like to have more voices?
It just came up in our conversations occasionally. I wouldn't necessarily think of it with, that it was teachers that were the gung-ho teachers as much as just, you know, people always want to be a part of the decision-making process, especially as it affects them. So the other thing that, in terms of leadership, that we wanted to point out is that we do feel that all the teachers that we spoke with really do understand that there's an implicit expectation to use technology with their students. They, they know it's important, they're positive about it, they think about it. But then when we would ask them pretty specifically, like how, how do you become aware of your administrators' expectations around technology? They would just kind of go, hmm, I don't know, you know, in many cases. And so that is less clear. So those explicit expectations are not always in place. And so to follow this up with one of our survey questions, we asked, in my school educators and people had to rate this, you know, levels of truth, you know, were they expected to use technology regularly, a few times a year? Do they get to decide individually when and where they're going to use it? Or are there no expectations? And for the first question that we had or the first statement, you can see the results here again about how teachers feel in terms of their expectations. And so again, we can see that in, in a couple of schools, it's pretty well-known, it's pretty clear that they're expected to integrate technology regularly in their curriculum. Whereas at other schools, we're ranging more at the fifty to sixty percent range. So that leaves another forty, forty to fifty percent who don't have that feeling about integrating technology. Yeah.
How did you define or did they define technology? I keep using the word technology, but I'm, I'm not clear on what you're talking about when it comes to that.
We had at the beginning of the survey a statement about what we meant when we talked about technology.
So when we, yeah, there was this statement in the beginning reminding people that we were talking about educational technology, not things like TVs or DVD players or media players like that, but it would include handheld devices, computers in their room or that they have access to. I mean, we were broad, we talked, I mean, some of the questions related to things like wireless access, you know, that piece. So it wasn't, you know, necessarily, like I said, things like TVs and things like that we used to think about as educational technology. Thank you.
Let me just zip along. So under recommendations? We do think that it would be important to appoint a leader who could actually take charge of crafting the vision on a broader basis across the community. We do also quite strongly believe that you have in place many talented educators who could take this lead. You certainly could go outside and hire someone for that role if you couldn't see a way to, to move people around or shift people around, but it's not, it's not as though you lack the talent for that position. Encourage the administrators to take a more active role in crafting the vision uniformly across all the schools so that all the teachers in the supervisory meeting are getting the same message. Be sure that the expert's expectations for technology integration are clear to all the teachers, and improve a system for accountability along those lines. I'm going to move to curriculum and assessment quickly. Right now, there's a big focus on Common Core and getting ready for the S-Back testing, which I'm sure you're probably all fairly familiar with. We still do see technology integration seen as supplemental to the, to the curriculum as rather than being integral to it. And that there's actually no way for us to ascertain exactly where students are in terms of their tech literacy skills. There's just no system in place. It's done very informally. Teachers kind of say, oh yeah, I know who's good and who's not, but there's no way to kind of pull that together to get a big picture of exactly where are their holes, where are their gaps in skills. We asked, we went, we asked this question in all of our interviews of people. We, we wanted to know if they felt that there was equal access, equitable access and opportunity for students in all grades in, in the school. And pretty uniformly, the answer was no. So, so we are, we're taking that data from our interviews that people said that the student knowledge and experiences would vary from teacher to teacher and from school to school. And that in some cases, some students still kind of lack that basic understanding of some computer fundamentals. Another question on our survey looked at those twenty-first century skills that I talked about a little bit earlier. And we also wanted to ask teachers how true they felt these statements were. And so what we're going to do is just kind of really focus on the green. The green is I don't know. So the first bullet has to do with critical thinking, problem solving, second one's about Common Core, third one's about our written curriculum includes ways to incorporate technology. And you'll see that the range from somewhat true to I don't know is, you know, at least half, fifty percent of those respondents. So in terms of recommendations, we think there's a need to develop a system to determine when and where the students are acquiring these skills. And a good way to go about that would be to develop some good models and exemplars of what we think is twenty-first century technology integration. And then use a model called SAMR to help everyone understand better their level of technology integration. And just very quickly, I'll try to explain this model. It's a simple model because it really only has two levels to look at, technology integration. The enhancement level and the transformation level. And the enhancement level is basically where you're using technology pretty much the same way you would, you would have carried on a traditional classroom experience. It's just now you've added technology. So like before, when you taught writing, people wrote by hand. Now you might use a word processor. The instruction hasn't changed, the goals of the lesson haven't changed, but there, but there's an automated tool. And so you've enhanced the learning through technology. At the transformation level, this is where the way in which instruction is delivered and conceptualized is quite different and it's made, is enabled by technology. So for example, now with the tools that are available today, you can redefine learning by allowing more students to do completely pure inquiry-based learning where they decide what they're interested in, where they make contacts with experts across the world, where they create new knowledge, new information, new reports, and share it globally. None of that could have been available in prior years, but it's available now.
See if he gets to do all the teaching. But I'll talk about teaching and learning. So our findings there is that most teachers are very receptive to using new technologies if they believe that these can enhance student learning. Some teachers did express a concern, especially at lower grades, of too much technology, and I think it's legitimate concern, knowing there's concerns about screen time for very young children, you don't really know how much they're using at home. So I think it was, I was very grateful to see teachers, especially of K-1, 2, having their concern of, you know, we want to balance this out, and I agree with that. And then we did have a question on the survey, I'll show you the results in a minute. We asked teachers how frequently, and the choices were daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly, or rarely, not at all, were they using technology for certain things? And we also asked around a curriculum. So most teachers are using technology to conduct research, build writing and math skills, supplement activities, organize and manage presentations. And this is what that looked like when I organized it, I separated the K through eights in CBU because there's just different needs at those levels, and tried to rank what was happening most frequently. And the blue is CBU, red is K through A. So kind of leading the pack is print products, doing some online research, actually observed a lot of that. Now, online research can sound great and it's good, but often it's, it might view it was on a substitution level, right? it was on a substitution level, right, and looking something up on the board, looking it up online. The communication, it's often some email, using handheld devices of some sort. But what you do notice as you go down is that the idea, and I have it in there up on top, that about half of teachers, of the teachers reported that they rarely or never use technology for those higher-order thinking skills of constructing new knowledge, developing something innovative, a product or a process, really what we think of as 21st century schools. So, that's why that SAMR model is so important to pay attention to. Substitution and augmentation's great, but to really push to be up at those higher levels, and maybe you're not gonna do that every day, so this might be a little misleading, but it should be more than rarely or never. The other thing, of course, I'm sure everyone's noticed by now, is the big spike of drill and practice in K-8. And you know, when I first looked at this, and I think when some other people did, we were like, "Oh, God, I'll drill and practice", but if you think about it, K-8 level, often there's a self-adaptive quizzes and tests that actually becomes more personalized for students. So, I don't necessarily think that that is a bad thing, that that's happening. And if you think of how the ESPEC is constructed online, also, I mean, it's something to keep an eye on, but it's certainly nothing to weep over, I think. So, our recommendations here are examine the practices to ensure the delivery, the consistency of delivery, but really among those skills that undergird the 21st century learning. The SAMR model, try to push the transformative, promote more of those personalized, project-based, student-centered learning, because then you are empowering students with a voice in their learning. Particularly, ask students about that in CDU, about when did they have choice in learning? And answers were, you know, very rare. Professional development, our next section. This is something we asked teachers, again, broken up by school, "How proficient do you feel?", and that's the blue, "in the use of digital tools in your own professional practice", and then, "How proficient do you feel in using digital tools to nurture students' learning?" You can see almost in every schools, except CDU, there is a gap. But what's interesting to me is to look at how many feel proficient in the student learning, and we're running about 50/50. So, that means half of the teachers don't feel proficient, because that was their other choice. This is proficient or very proficient, and then it was non-proficient. So, there's a need for professional development there. And you know, when we look at the schools, I just want people to keep in mind as we break this up, we broke it up to be useful to people at the schools. And I think in every school, it's not one person, one purchase, one policy, one anything that makes the difference. It's a whole, you know, conglomeration really of things that are in place. So, for professional development, the offerings and expectations are not really consistent across schools. In some schools, the IT specialists have a set time every week where they're available, they present, and people come. Other places, it's really smashed in, not much time or no time at all, not guaranteed any time. And when they work with teachers, they do have a very positive impact. To some teachers, and I think this is very legitimate, you know, what we hear a lot, and just no surprise to you, it's time. It's like, "I've got so much to do. You know, I've got my class, I've got Common Core to get ready for, I've got, you know, other things, and there's like a lot of time." So, if we could all put more hours in a day, ha-ha, that's not going to happen. But if we can find some ways, and we have a few recommendations to help with that. But teachers expressed a lot of appreciation for the professional development that is available to them, especially programs that have been offered in the summer. They were, people took that and were just glowing about that. So, that's all good work. And I love this quote, it came out of an interview with somebody, and this is someone who's embracing technology, but even this person said, "I don't know, I get so caught up, I really wanna use it, but then there's so many choices, and I just need some help in getting it all sorted out", and that's the role of your IT specialist. So, some recommendations we have is really, you know, you can see all of these, but the ones I wanna focus on and interest the time is the last one, because you have a lot of good things happening here, and there's no reason why you can't have a lot of PD, kind of on a just-in-time model, on your own website, almost like your own, you can have your own, you know, a YouTube channel, and teachers can have access to this. Not that that replaces anything else you want to do in terms of summer offering, or having embedded professional development with one of your IT specialists, but then it's something that I think you can move more and more to, and your teachers are very receptive. They know where to find some things that they need. So, developing that and building that out and sharing it across the SU would be a great, great move. Infrastructure. So, this is really, really great news, is that you've got a very solid infrastructure, and people are very happy with it. And it's no surprise, and I don't know if it's been resolved yet, but there was wireless issues at CDU, and that's probably the biggest thing we heard about, infrastructure from teachers. But people are very satisfied. And we asked a question, and the scale on this was, I think it's excellent, very adequate, adequate, and then not adequate, and very poor. And so, this sums up all the responses on a percentile basis from all schools on the positive side. So, it's adequate up to excellent. And these results were amazing, because the questions were around, "Do you have the type of equipment you need? Do you have enough of it? Is it in a good location?". You can see the rest of it, instructional support, tech support. And when we pulled it all together and said, "Wow, wow, you're running around 90%", and someone from CDU said, "Yeah, but what about our wireless"? It's like, "Okay, yeah, if you just aggregate, you got dinged on the end a little bit", but even so, you have great infrastructure, and teachers know that, and they're thankful for it. So, you've got some disparity in the funding for your technology implementation from school to school, but teachers are very, feel very fortunate to work here for, you know, all the support that they have. So, our recommendation is continue the good work on that, the wireless issues. We have a note here about studying distribution of computer resources. I mean, if anything, we heard, "Well, there is a cart, but it's too far, and sometimes it's too much, you know, I don't have time to get the cart", and so on. And I know the IT specialists are on top of that, because we saw a lot of great sharing of equipment, different ways of doing that, checking out from the library and so on. So, just, you know, that's one thing to keep in mind. And then, in some places, you know, continue that migration from a large computer lab to more personalized devices, because that's really the way that the world is going right now. And then, Sandy, I think you've got this, and we should probably wrap up in two minutes, so we have time for questions.
So, this is just one bullet. We just feel very strongly that no matter what happens and however you go forward, that you develop a system to track your progress, especially around student technology literacy skills, how educators are using and applying the technologies that they have, and also how well the professional development offerings that you support are having an impact in the classroom. In terms of organizational structure, we've kind of mentioned this before. We think that the model of centralized network services is working very well to support the infrastructure, and that that centralization has helped keep all the schools on a similar playing field, maybe not totally equitable playing field, but certainly similar enough that most students are getting a very like experience in using the technology from school to school. We think that the CSSU Information Technology Team is doing a good job to revise their support to the educational technology program, but that that implementation varies from school to school. And most importantly is that the IT specialist alone cannot meet the vision of the technology plan. And remember, that vision is student-centered learning, flexible pathways. They're not in a position to make those things happen. That leadership has to come from above. So, we think that there should be someone who is out there spreading the word and building the message, that you'll continue to work collaboratively to increase your cooperation and your sharing of resources between all the schools. There is a need for some of the positions for information technology specialists to be increased at some schools, to reflect the actual population of the school, and more time for, and opportunity for embedded professional development with the teachers. And one of the things I wanted to say last but not least about this edges of reform, there's a book called Curriculum 21 that's written by Heidi Jacobson, and in that book she states that schools can no longer fiddle at the edges of reform, that it's time to transform how we envision our schools in the future. And it seems to us that you are in this place, this point in time, where that vision, or that new need for change, is in front of you. So, to move forward with that new vision, there needs to be a more unified vision and commitment, and that vision will call for more personalized learning, multiple pathways, greater engagement by the community partners. And in order for that to happen, you need leadership. It's going to take a lot of time, and it's going to involve a lot of discussion with the community. All people need to work together to build that vision, and come to understand and appreciate its importance. What you have going for you best is your people. You have great people, not only the people that work in these school systems, but in this community. You have people that care about education, that support it, and will do their best for their children in their communities. And we believe that it is possible for five separate individual school districts to work collaboratively together to provide equal opportunity for all your students. That's it. Thank you.
Okay, so now we have about four more questions. Sorry.
Any questions?
I have a question. So, I saw in your presentation the sort of disparity between the drills and practice relative to sort of the higher-order-
Yep, yep.
-sort of transformative stuff. And that was sort of echoed in your report, where I think I read that you said the, sort of, the culture and curriculum is rooted in, with historic, was sort of an agricultural, industrial kind of society where there's a premium on routine and process and that sort of thing. And we're trying to get kids prepared for a world where information technology has made it much more sort of dynamic and changing, and we want them to be adaptable and sort of flexible. And just sort of curious, do you see, or do you have recommendations around how to get the culture of the school to be pushing that flexibility and that dynamic change, and specifically at the tech specialist or IT specialist role? Is that part of their rubric? And is that, are we actively putting people in those roles who are at the forefront of best practices and looking to new sort of, you know, all the-
In the IT specialist roles?
Yeah.
Definitely. In fact, one thing we should mention is that Sandy and I recommended, because I had gone through this before, you're probably all familiar with the idea, the concept of MOOCs, massive open online courses, so you can study in a MOOC on anything. So, there was one actually about, it was about personalized learning and technology, I think, basically, from-
It was about the transition to the digital transformation, right?
Yeah, yeah. And so, we suggested, and it came from, I think, NC State, maybe, we suggested to the, all the IT specialists, "You should enroll in this", and so, they did, and we did too. And so, once a week, I know they were doing work on it, we met, and it was a good look at me, at these people, the IT specialists here at CSU, who are willing to give more time to learn more, even more about this. But I could tell from the conversation, they understand this, they know it, and they're pushing it. But I think as Sandy said in her concluding remarks, it's the idea, they are employees in the school also. They have no specific, they are a great resource, but no specific authority to push this into individual classrooms. So, that's where I think having a leader that can help with this, someone who has more authority and help the administrators also, would be very useful. And the way we've been looking at it is, it's not an accident that people feel very satisfied with the network and support and the backbone of everything, because you have someone in CSU who takes care of that, who is that leader, and kind of, you know, all the people at schools report to him. And so, or could be her, but it's him in this case. But, and to parallel, almost try to parallel that with a leadership position, because as I said, it goes back to the shared vision of leadership. And without solid understanding of that and the transformations for learning, all the devices and everything is not gonna get you where you wanna be with those higher-order thinking skills, the 21st century skills.
So, I think there's gonna be a lot more questions. I know I'm just absorbing it all myself, so I know we're gonna have to continue the conversation. If you didn't get a chance to read through, you should read through the documents, because there's a lot of, actually, this helped to kind of put things in perspective that I was reading, but a lot of good points, and we're clearly gonna have to continue the conversation.
Sure. Well, we're available. If you want to email us or-
Believe me, we could go for 20 minutes. I couldn't have made that much time for you guys, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we are adjourned.